This is a meeting of the ARPA Commission on August 29, 2022 at 1:30 PM. And the first order of business is roll call. And I think we just went around.
We might need to talk a little louder.
Oh, right. Sorry for the air conditioner. I think we're only missing Robin and Samantha. So, you have four. And a few minutes. Did I send that? It's like, I think from a couple of weeks ago.
Catching up on emails.
I know. Like, my, do the August 1st ones.
I talked with Kelsey about tag teaming most last, so I don't remember an email going out.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so. I think the other two we all had.
That was, yeah.
Yeah. So, July 11. Did any?
The 11th and the 1st are not on the website, so I think we're still at just the 18th.
Okay. Okay, so good. So, the 18th, so did you all have a chance?
I don't think there was to approve the minutes of July 18.
All right, for a second. All right, so does anybody see anything? Change or have corrected? No? All right, then, if you can vote on it. I'll favor approving the minutes from July 18.
I agree.
Anyone? Anyone else say? Okay. Of course, mine, I was just. I just saw, we have an email from Mike Fu, Chairman of the Board of Finance, which I got yesterday and did not send to you guys, but I just saw it just now. It says, "ARPA Commission Chairman, as you know, last Thursday night, the Board of Finance considered the requests where the Commission to offer guidance comment on the ARPA 32 and 36. As you and I previously discussed in our meetings, since we are problematic, we have potential for interference of commissioners giving themselves or each other bonuses, especially myself, supported those concerns with consensus of board members. The consensus also recognized that our Board does not have any authority in this matter because he does appreciate the opportunity to comment since we traditionally participate in the approval of funds like these and in securing taxpayer, taxpayer feedback or even approval. Because of the above, the Commission have spent considerable time discussing each request. The Board did not take a position on the value or sensibility of the bonuses, but did move to comment on the process of approving those requests. The following motion would improve with five yes and one abstention." Says Laura's new finding. "The Board of Finance makes a non-binding recommendation through our representative to the ARPA Commission, ARPA 32 and 36, presented in round meeting." So, so that's for our call. But I think that's the only email that I have received in the last couple of weeks. So, moving on to present to speak. Is anyone in the public here present to speak, either on Zoom or in the room? Let's see, Ralph? No? Okay, well, we'll move on to new business. So, we don't have any new requests to be received or heard because our funding requests are still paused under unfinished business. In the agenda, it's all the updates on the previously funded requests. I think there's been some, some movement made on a few things.
Comment on the ambulance fund.
Okay.
The ambulance is in service. Senior degree ambulance driving on down. Just to summarize, it's not done yet, but so far, we've spent $2,840 on the vehicle. Twenty-five hundred first parents. Eleven thousand, two hundred for radios. And $1,505. When it said $77,040. So, I'm sorry, but we still have to get more.
Okay.
Make them grow.
Does anybody have any other comments on any of the other items?
I can talk about the devices for the town staff and some of that included some network upgrades. I don't believe we're going to be able to close that one for quite some time. Some of the items for the Wi-Fi upgrades are anticipated in March. So, while the rest of it will most likely be done, the project will stay open until those come in. Just for comparison's sake, the school just received similar items that had been about a year and a half on order. So, we're definitely moving forward. Many of the town staff have their two main new devices. As IT starts getting school ready, they've kind of backed off here and are getting the school up and running for the start of the school year, and they'll get back to completing, configuring all of the devices. But that will keep that open for some time. And the senior center coordinator position, the union and the town are working on negotiating the salary. And then we will inform that, putting maybe. Add out.
So, so apparently there's.
Nothing new there. Yeah, so we've had, so we, we had anticipated expenditures as far back as April when we configured, so depending on where we land with salary. Think that all even should be.
Okay. So. And then there were a few things that were, POs were disseminated last week, or the radio?
No.
Or?
The Aircap, the SBA. So, I know we got a PO to Chief Snyder so that we can secure that funding for that. And I believe it was coming in well under budget. I believe it was $119,000. And so, hopefully that will stay that way, be able to do that. And then the skids here, and again, only a PO has gone up for that. We don't expect the machine until late September.
Okay.
John, your WY part. There are not long for it.
Erica, any updates on the funding?
I apologize, I've been out for some days. I'll defer to Donna.
Just so everyone's aware, we got partial payment of the second tranche of funding. So, they sent. For the third one, $298,000. Yeah, $298,000, so. $298,000 of the.
Eight sixty-seven and change.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's coming from two different buckets, and so one goes past through a little bit.
But the first, but the first.
Came all at once.
All at once, so that's what.
Since lately.
So, but as far as cash flow goes, there haven't been any POs cut first. To. If, if everything gets spent down right, right now, we have the cash to do it. But not have to cut the POs for some of the more expensive or later approved items. So. So. That's what we gotta do. And so, there's quite a few of these projects, when you look at the list, are still on hold until the funds are available. So, we're just gonna have to wait. Updates I previously heard request, the library repair, that's, that's gonna stay on that list until we have another public hearing. And we can put that on the agenda. And then that brings us to the updated time requests heard at public hearing that were basically cabled until this week. And. I mean, I. I think. You just, you just heard me read what happened at Word Finance last week. For the ARPA 32, 36, but ARPA 33, has there been any? That's a flag, spray, smart was a mind prepare. So, I think we're waiting for the selectmen to talk with the foundation and work out.
I mean, what is there to work out? I don't understand this. We, we, I sent you our IRS letter saying that we were a nonprofit organization, a 501(c). We are an independent organization. We have nothing to do with the town. I also sent the selectman a letter saying that we would assume responsibility for maintenance on the, on the monuments.
So, I think, I, I, I believe, Christina, that I think we, it got to this point because this commission had discussion about whether or not they were 501(c). But it lacks, last being that was not known information. Besides that, we've gotten some communications from folks at the senior center and from this organization. And I think there needs to be some details worked out. And that's my opinion, the commission certainly can move in whatever direction it feels best. But I still think before we move forward, assuming responsibilities and town items by an independent group, I think there needs to be some discussion. We talked about this before. And I think you don't seem, you and I don't agree.
Well, the mine, the Veterans Memorial is not a town, is not a town thing. It was not. I mean, it was put up with private money. I mean, it's on town land, but yes, it was put up by private money. It was, it's not, the town has nothing to do with it. I don't, I don't understand where it is. I'm.
I think this is not, it's not a discussion for this commission, you know, the commission.
Do you have an objective meeting with the first selectman? Ed, can you, can you meet with her? Or, and, and just hash out these.
We've received communications from the senior center as well. I think you're aware of that. There seems to be, so we're, everyone's a little bit caught in something. And I, that I believe this commission held up moving forward because we weren't aware of the, the status of the organization. But that's why we didn't move forward with approving or not approving. So, I still think it would be helpful for there to be communication between this organization and the town to determine where things go. The town has funds that we put to other things. You seem to, this is not a conversation for this commi- commission and the how the funds are spent and what they're utilized for. This commission can take whatever direction we go, necessarily on approving or not approving. I think there needs to be details worked out at the table outside of this commission.
It seems that this general, Eric, people are in favor of what, what you're talking about. And nobody said they're against it and supporting the town. It's just details that the selectmen would like hammered out. So, it seems like just right to sit down between you and them, or them.
Right, you seem reluctant to communicate with the town about the funds and the way things have worked. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure why. I think everyone is kind of on the same page. So, but again, I don't believe that has any bearing on whether or not this group decides to move forward on approving or not approving this money. It is a separate discussion.
We'll sit, we'll sit down with the selectmen if we can get on their agenda. It's just that I.
I've asked multiple times, we could sit down, I think we can sit down and talk about it. I don't necessarily.
I realize that, but over, over the last month and a half, it's been kind of tough. Yeah, because I have, I've been out in the country, things have happened with the VFW, as you know. It's been tough. Every time I think about it, and I see the minutes come out that there was a selectman's meeting, well. I don't know, I, you know, if, if you send me an email saying you're on our agenda, could you, I'd be there.
So, before you leave today, let's set up a meeting for you and I to sit down and have a conversation.
All right, but I, I still think that has nothing to do with the approval of these funds.
I think I've said that multiple times.
Right.
That discussion. This group may take that into their decision, but I still think that conversation needs to happen before funds are spent. That's my.
What, a lot of what, like I said before, a lot of what we're gonna be doing and what we say we're gonna support as a group is things that individuals have been supporting right along the majority of it with their own funds. We're just trying to establish something that's solid so that it continues on from here. Because I'll be honest with you. As far as what the town has done. We've been, they haven't been, I mean, they go and, they go and shovel and stone. But we do, we do the maintenance on it. We do the flags. We do a lot of, you know.
I think the memorial is just one piece of this. I think there's, if you wanted, there's a lot bigger things at play that just warrant a discussion. That, that's all. Nothing, I think we can come to our, some sort of agreement on that. We just, all right, if we can sit down and talk about it.
So, when, when is your, all right.
So, should, should we move forward with this today? Or it's not right?
Then have to wait till the next chunk of money comes from?
Well, yeah, but yes, if we were to do this today, this would be on the list of things. It's, we're waiting for the next chunk of money to come in. It's not like, who said yesterday, you can go buy the things tomorrow. Because we don't have the money in here.
I'm more free to approve ARPA 33. It, it sounds like we're on the right track and it's gonna be hashed out.
If you make the motion. I'm not, again, I have never been opposed to the idea of it. I think there, in this funding, are some things at the town, we actually budgeted for some of these items, and it's more than just the memorial at the senior center. And I think there needs to be a clear plan. If Ed walks away from this group and this group dissolves, who's going to take these things on? I think we need to have a solid agreement with the town on some of these things so that we can ensure that this continues to happen. So, I, I'm in support of it, so I'll second your motion for discussion.
And for discussion. Being a person who was involved in the Memorial Day, day on, on me and the ordering and stuff for many years. Since we know. Um, when I started with the town in 2009, the town did have a budget for Memorial Day. It was, I think, nine thousand dollars. And out of the thousand dollars, a hundred dollars was marked for the car show, so rolling only nine hundred dollars. There was no, nothing like clear set in stone on what was to be ordered or whatever. It was kind of like, we kind of would go with the flow and whoever was the man or at the time would be like, okay, well, we need this, that, and whatever. But out of that also was the FW flags for the auxiliary and then the ice cream sandwiches. I mean, there were certain things, and every year it kind of, again, I don't want to say shooting, but it was, it was not time dry. So, the VFW put money in from time to time. If they had it, they would, they would chip in and whatever. We always seem to make it work. However, my concern, knowing what's gone on in the years, in the past 13 years, if this $6,500 is approved and then, you know, next year goes or whatever, and it is depleted, my concern is that that $6,500 is gonna come back to the town, and that's something that, that's a huge increase. So, and I think that is probably why there's concern from the selectmen of what, ironing out the detail. And I am totally in agreement with, with what Erica is saying, and that's, that's why.
This, this money has nothing at all to do with more of it. This has nothing to do with what the VFW is doing. We're not asking this money for more of it.
But it's that flag, grave markers.
Right.
Flags and grave markers come out of the memorial.
The town, the town provides those.
And, and as I said in previous meetings, the flags and grave markers are the ones that we put into the cemetery and found it are not there.
Right, but that's the whole problem over the 13 years was that you, there, oh, you just order a couple, and then all of a sudden, the next year would come, we need 50 of them. Well, they're not cheap. So, I would always try to, you know, figure out.
And we're aware of that, and that's why we started the foundation, so we could have fundraisers to get the money to keep, so that we can keep putting flags on the graves that don't have them.
Right.
So, some, some of these grave markers that are missing go back to the Civil War. So, you're telling me that the town hasn't known this since the Civil War?
I'm just saying that there should be a plan in place of everything. And, and I know I've been working with Phil, he's been, you know, we were trying to figure out who the veterans are and stuff because there were a few, and there still are going to be some that looks through the cracks. But I just, my concern is that that somehow, it, it just needs to be worked out with, put in stone, like a policy needs to be in place.
I.
I think, I'm, I'm in favor of spending this money. I just think that for consistency's sake, we need to know how it will hit the operating budget, like every other project that's come before. I, I, I don't think it's a matter of if we're gonna expend the funds. I think it's just a matter of when and how and whether. And I was trying to think if there's another structure of, rather than the money going directly out, would the town take this money for those purposes and then essentially contract or to get the same work done without taking it off the grant or off the budget, town budget? So that it, yeah, because that's what's gonna happen. It's gonna come off the budget. It's gonna be something that's handled by an outside group. And then when there's issues down the road at some point, it's gonna come back and it's gonna be a line item that has to be added. And, and I think that the town should know whether we need to just carry that line and keep it, or I don't know. I think there just needs to be a plan.
So, so for me, you know, personally, and as a first of all, I have great respect for what our veterans have done and what, what they plan to do. But let's make no mistake there. I just want to make sure that we know if Ed leaves and Mr. Monty, it leaves, and they've headed up this great organization and nobody passes it on. We know even the greatest idea begin and then nobody continues them on. There's a, going to be an expectation for certain things to continue, and where will we find that funding? I think that's the only discussion I want to have is how it's gonna work. Let's make sure we have an understanding, make sure we have a balance in what they're trying to do with private donations and with the funds the town has within our budget and how we can make sure this continues. And so that when and if something happens, they aren't able to get enough donations. It's, listen, we all know, when you put the call up for certain things, people answer, but it's not guaranteed. So, how can we move forward? And I think, I just think there's, it should be a plan in there so that we can absorb that. I don't want to take something out of our budget because we all know it's very difficult to put it back in. But it's gonna be hard for me to justify even a thousand dollars if it's being spent by a completely different organization. Why should I have taxpayers for that separately? That's all I want to do is have a conversation before we spend the funds and move forward, not the idea of the project. At all. I'm absolutely in favor of it, but we just need to, we need to understand how there could be financial implications moving forward.
And I'm in, I'm in agreement with Erica, and absolutely, every veteran should be recognized, right? Absolutely. It's just, something needs to be in writing, like an A.
The problem we've had is the honor roll in front of the town halls in disrepair. Nobody stepped forward from the town to repair it. The monument, the Veterans Memorial, plus a $15,000 put up. Ninety-five percent of that was through donations. Okay, not the town. All right. The flag sit around the roll. Yeah, the, some of the town bought some of those flags, but 90% of them were, were bought through donations.
That is correct. But donations that were put through the town, through our, through our finance office and your program, those are the things we need to iron out. We need to iron out the process. We took in the funds. And then we put out the funds. They would, so there was a process, and we just need to understand how that is. Donna is our business manager. She has funds now that will just be sitting there. If we say we're done and we hand it over to a separate organization, we have to justify the funds that be taken in for other flags. There just needs to be some clear process.
You mean, you have to justify donations that have come into the town for the flags? When those donations with your.
We have money sitting that the town accounts for. Am I correct, Donna? And Donna needs, every year, we do our books, and, and we have to speak to what those funds are. So, yes, we need to, we need to fully understand that. As soon as that started going through the town's funding, the town became involved.
She has to spend that money on flags.
Right.
So, if you're gonna buy a bunch of flags, then what's she gonna do with that money?
Is that? That's correct, because people still bring us money because they believe the town is in charge of that. I think together we figure out how to best get the messaging out and how it should be done. That's all. This really isn't an adversarial thing, and I'm not sure why I'm getting that feeling. You want it to be you and, and not the town, and, and we're, we're intertwined.
Our, our, our one purpose in creating the foundation was to separate the town from these memorials, number one. Number two, to make it self-sufficient so that when we're gone, they will continue. That was our, that was our main purpose. Our main purpose was not to put, be an adversarial to, to the town. We're just trying to give all this back to the people.
Could, could that money essentially would be more paperwork? Could that same amount of money be put into that line? And then they come to the town and say, we're gonna buy 100 flags. This is the cost and the town issues the check so that if it's not spent down, it can roll over into another fiscal year?
We're an independent, non-fried foundation.
Not, not in the way they have it set up now. I wouldn't think so, but, but again, I won't say no. I think we sit down and we have a discussion about what that would look like with our business manager and determine. It just needs to be a discussion. Again, I've seen nobody here arguing the merits of the funding. It's just a separate discussion outside of this commission should take place so that the, that we fully understand the process.
The, the one question that, that does come up though is, are, are these one-time purchases? Or like Robin was saying, are we gonna agree something that needs to be funded in the future? And if that's the case, legally, we can't use this money for something like that. So, if, if it's a one-time thing, then, then.
That's what we were doing. We have no, we had no, I know. What, there was no way we were looking at long-term re-purchase purchases from here on and after the system, just to repair and replace things that were damaged. After that, we would take it from there. But do what you want.
So, you guys are gonna talk and you're gonna?
Yeah, I guess we'll talk. It sounds like, to me, it sounds like the town still wants to control the money.
And that has never been, that has never been said. That, that has absolutely not been said at all, and I think that's probably what gives the commission pause, that you wouldn't work together.
Yeah, but when you say, well, Donna's got all this money.
We do have some fun.
The money, well.
We do, and we have to. We set up a flag committee. The people that came to the town, they came to the town.
I understand that, Erica.
And so, we do have funds, and so we need to talk about those. If you're gonna go out and buy flags, again, I think that's a wonderful thing to do. What do we do with the monies we have, and how do we continue to justify spending that or taking in donations?
But a member of the commission just said, well, what if we, what if we take, took that money and gave it to the town? And then the town would go without. I mean, we're doing exactly what we.
No, but he's asking the question. He didn't say that's what we need to do. He's asking a question to try to help us work together. Can I ask how much your foundation has been able to raise since you started?
We've raised about $500. Actually, $600. And that's in a couple of months.
A couple of months and not very large events, so I think that's wonderful. And so, I think that helps us to understand maybe how you get to Robert's point of sustainability so that we can understand what the town, look, we all know at some point, all of us aren't gonna be at the table of any of these organizations. It's a fact. And how can we help them move forward with the investments we're putting in? I see that as the only, well, the only discussion.
We look at it the same way. If, if all of a sudden the taxpayers are unhappy with the way taxes are, then you guys have to cut your budget. Are, and, and we rely on money from the town for that budget. Is that one of the things that's gonna be cut?
I mean, we're in the same boat. And I know I haven't, probably Christina before me, you know, it's only a thousand dollars in our budget, but fight to make sure that stays there so that we can honor our veterans and honor those very important aspects of our community. And so, it's not something I'd like to see, but, but if I can't justify the expense, it's gonna be hard for me to continue to have taxpayers work. But if we have a discussion, I'll understand where the funding is from, and if I make a cut, I can make others feel comfortable with, we cut this money out of the town set because there is a group that's going to take that on. That's all. It's just detail.
I think that the thousand dollars is not a big issue. Three years from now, you need to put a thousand dollars back in the budget, but the fact that the town, what, in theory, right, you should agree. But the fact that the town, what, in theory, right, you shouldn't agree, um, but. The fact that the town has historically taken donations for expenditures in this area. And people donate money to the town thinking that's what's gonna be used for, if the town were to divest themselves from that, we need to know. What to do with the money that is here, but also someone walks in with, I wanna make a donation, what do we say? Do we take the money in or do we say, well, you can't do that, you've gotta go somewhere else? Because if I'm gonna donate money to the town and I expect it to be used for a certain purpose. Now that, that is gone, I, you know, like, that money's, I think that's what you're talking about. It's not the line item, the thousand, it's the money that private residents have donated.
I think it's a little bit of both.
So that.
Little bit of both, if this organization takes it on and can fund it, that's great, we can cut that um line item back. Yes, it's only a thousand dollars, but we all know every dollar matters and justifying how we spend it. If I'm not gonna spend a thousand dollars, how do I continue to ask for that, uh, for that funding? We try to keep our budgets as um, as, as true as, as we know, so.
Is that a rolling over fund or is that gonna be a line item?
Simply a line item.
How many donation, what's the total, you know, does the town?
I don't know, because that's a separate, essentially we set up a flag committee um several years ago to handle these things. Um, and so.
But it's not like they see tens of thousands of dollars. It's just a small amount of one donation. So it seems, I'm thinking table, I'll move, I'll move table them, with expectation of, of this father meeting.
Okay, I'm in favor of tabling it.
Hi.
Hi, any more votes? Okay, Arba thirty-two and thirty-six, so I don't, to bring everybody back up to speed. At our last meeting, we tabled it, so the board of finance could play in. They, they, they answered how they wanted to answer, which was not to actually give um. Direct feedback on the. Quest, I think a couple of people came to the public hearing and maybe expressed um their views there, but as individuals, but as a group, they didn't. They um weigh in and just said, um. They think it should go to a town meeting, so.
They, I didn't come to a consensus, I mean, I was on that meeting and a couple of them did say that they weren't opposed to the project. Which is what we had asked them for, they just as a group chose not to take a stand on it.
Yeah.
So. Quick questions. It's Art the Chief Moore, person required, so I thought it was gonna be on. But the last time I talked, he didn't, he wanted with, basically, he doesn't want to go, he just wants to drop it. So I, for me, the question now is to the submitters.
I, I stand by the, the. The project itself and um, you know, why, why it was put in place. Um, I'm not opposed to having the townspeople weigh in on these kinds of things. I'm, we set forth um from the town, like ordinance. That handle these things in one particular way. And so I, for me, I stand by that process, and when I did that, I didn't know what I was going to submit at that point, it didn't have anything laying out. These all came out after, I understand the um concerns folks have. Um, I, I think the integrity of this commission um is better than some of the suggestions people have made. And I stand by the merits of the project that I put forward to Arba, but. I've said it before, this commission needs to decide how we want to move forward with these projects. And so if this commission felt it should go to a town meeting, we heard from a town council. Who, you know, had said that we have an ordinance that very clearly uh gives us the ability. To spend these funds and the sole ability, um, and, but didn't say we couldn't go to town either. Um, and once again, I worry that once we do with one, where will we be out behind if we take others? And why didn't we take others? Um, and, and to me, it's, you know, I believe in the ordinance that we put forward. There was an argument at the board of finance the other night that, um, actually an accusation that I didn't leadership that I, I took that personally. Didn't look enough into what other towns were doing. Um, quite frankly, there's a hundred and sixty-nine different uh ways of doing things and we all do them differently on a normal. Uh basis, some follow state statutes, some have individual charters. I actually did consult with many a town, at the time, there were many who hadn't decided how they were gonna spend their funds, some have. Come to different conclusions since then, I think you all know this ordinance was based off of what another town was doing. The argument about we had to listen to another town seems convenient depending on how that person feels about projects. Um, I did consult with multiple other towns, um, we did take an ordinance that's being used and successfully. Um, in another town and, you know, I, I still stand behind that ordinance and I stand behind this project. Because quite frankly, there is not funding within any other source of funding to be able to allocate those kinds of funds. And I still believe our staff should be um. Should, should be given uh something for the work that they did during COVID. And we're not at COVID, so.
I, I. I just think this is silly, personally, I think we need to just vote our, I, I, it's thirty-two thousand dollars. Explains exactly who it's going to, was submitted by the board of selectmen through a public meeting. And it is putting such a small amount of money back in the pocket of the people who kept the operation running through COVID. When we talk about premium pay for other folks that were doing work, yes, they were obviously taking different risks given their responsibility. But the fact of the matter is, these people continue to show up and to figure things out with problems that they had nothing to do with what they were hired to do here. They came in and they did everything that was asked of them and I just. When there's a document that's been provided that lists who's getting paid what, explains exactly the mathematics behind it. That was submitted by the board of selectmen, which represents the town, I just don't understand the optics, it feels political, I don't think it should be. I think we need to vote, so unless anybody has anything else to say, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Arpa thirty-two.
I have a question.
Oh, can I second for discussion purposes?
My question is this, uh, you heard me attorney at the Zoom meeting. And he referenced the letter that he wrote, you know, you said you have a letter, you know, but I never read the letter, I never heard the letter. Was this opinion?
I know, I'm trying, I apologize, there's been a lot of, you know.
Depending in the letter, different depending on Zoom?
No, what he was referencing wasn't his opinion on this, he was referencing, I think Robin had asked the question about um statutes.
Yeah.
Um, and that was um at the board of selectman level when we were determining the statute, I'm, I'm sorry, the ordinance. And he was speaking about the particular statute and the board of finance role to appropriate funds. I believe I had that, that was legally separate, so that's what he was referencing.
It was more of an umbrella.
Yes.
And for clarification, that the statute I was referencing is spending of money in the general fund and I believe these are for funds.
Very good, thank you.
Your motion was uh thirty-two, right?
Just thirty-two was the first one, right? Yeah, I'm thirty-two.
Chief Moore is logging in.
Um, you know, something else that was, that was said at the board of finance um was that we, once again. Um, questioning our misuse, misappropriation of these funds and I'll stand by what I said before. We can't misappropriate something we haven't actually done. Until this point, we haven't had a motion to move forward with it, so, so we have not. And we did hear from our attorney and we're having, I think, good discussions, we don't always agree. And, and every board does, and if we all agree, we'll probably all do something um wrong. But we haven't misappropriated funds and then our attorney came to us and said, we, we have the ability to make those decisions. Um, and, and we have an ordinance, so when we are following it, just like we wouldn't follow any other ordinance or state statute in absence of an order. So I feel, I still feel comfortable in the process that we have an understanding concerns others have.
I, I agree with Mike totally, that over and over and. Problem I have, the quandary I see for myself at this point is. Right, to me, it's either town meeting at this point or. Just not be forward, but if we kind of, in, in my mind, the uh. Asking the board of finance to their input was kind of acknowledging, all right. We need some help, we'd like some, my words, not necessarily yours. Um, weigh in on this and, and they, they chose their answer the way they chose them, it's okay, so. As, as much as I think we should do it, with all that's transpired and been said. Uh, I'm in favor of the project, that's the point, it's like we're at where we're at for this and so for me. Eric, it's, it's more, oh, even Tom, I, I get, I hear you, I, I, I agree with all, we accept the, I'm slicing it where. It's like, I think we're past person, you know, say, to this side, I think now it's, it's wrong by that.
You know, so we, we held a public hearing, right? And all of the people, the public hearing said, you know, some questioned whether or not these people actually worked. Um, and, and I take offense on behalf of the staff here, they actually worked. Um, and then suggested to go to a town meeting, what we had was essentially.
Yeah.
The same concept as a town meeting, so um I, the idea is that they wanna vote on it instead of letting the Arpa commission. And my issue, and, and I will say that again, this is, I, I fully believe some of it was started um. With good intention, Christina had some concerns about the number of people who would vote at the, at the table, be part of the process. And, and that's where the board of finance has stood with it. Other members of the public question our actual ability to have this commission based on the ordinance. And so, you know, I see a lot of issue, I'm not afraid to take something to town meeting, I, that's not it at all, but we set forth a process. And then we just are gonna pick, because something seems slightly political or controversial, to undo that process. And that, and I. But I've said before that that decision had to be made not by me, but by this commission. So this commission votes up or down on the motion that's before us now and then up or down on any subsequent motion. I will honor whatever came from the commission, I think that's what's important here, is that we have the ability to, to take that. And, and make those decisions, our attorney um. Who, you know, was, was clear and we have the ability one way or the other, um, we didn't, we didn't encourage.
It gets, just with this going, it, it gets for me where we have the ability, is it, is it prudent, is it wise? To go forward in that direction, that's, that's where I'm at, is it, we can't, I, I agree with you, I really, we can vote on. Is it, is it wise at this point? And, and I guess we just each have, I mean, I don't want it to come to you either, I'd rather not do anything, right? Only because, not because. Wisdom of the Tommy, I get all that and, and I'm all for democracy, but there's certain, certain things are in a certain wheelhouse for me. You, you, you don't necessarily wanna get up and debate in, in, in an environment like that. And when I say like that, don't take it wrong, it's just, again, it's important. Just envision doing a referendum on state employee benefits or raises, these are, these are mine. Generally popular. At the last, at the last meeting, you said something that resonated with me, which is basically changing the process in the middle of the process. For that point alone, I'm totally against going to a town meeting. I understand that it allows this commission to essentially sidestep something that has become a little bit of a hot button issue, but. As someone who's been staring down the table with the planning and zoning commission with three hundred people in the gymnasium, week after week, sometimes. This is where it falls, and I also wanna make clear, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna be getting any of these bonuses, which is why I'm still sitting, but. The process, the ordinance gives us the ability to make the decision, I think we asked the board of finance for guidance. We asked them, should we go left or right, and they said, look at a map, that doesn't help us, I don't think they put us in a position of, well, now we know what we need to do. I think they chose to, as we've said, provide feedback on other components, I, I just. Of the total number of employees and the amount of money and the way in which this has been debated. And nobody has come up and said, this is a crazy idea, I, I, I.
Just like put the employees, excuse me.
But we can't, because.
Employees in the frying pan.
Here's my, at, at this point somewhat, but does it. Well, if you send them to the town meeting, what are you doing for someone shows up?
Quite frankly, I think, like you said, it's political and I need, it's me in the frying pan. That's why I think it is, I think, I think when, when we take this town meeting, it's gonna take all of these employees. And some of those especially we heard in public meeting and heighten a little bit, whether or not they actually did their job and they deserve the merits of this. Which i- it's what should and could be debated at town meeting, it's gonna put an attitude taste in some mouth. But I'm not opposed to whatever this commission decides, but we are, we are changing the process.
And what do we do, we get a more political or hot-button application for the second round of funding? Do we just now send everything to a town meeting? I just, I don't like it.
No, because now you have hopefully a full board that's voting, that we don't know what we're gonna get, again.
Then I would say, there's another thing that comes through that half the board can't vote on, then yeah.
It's just to me, it, it, it's just, we're just undoing the ordinance that was approved by the town. We're sort of, we're sort of giving ourselves this, this pressure relief valve that wasn't built in because of where things are and I just. I don't think, I, it's not the process that was created and so.
Could we have a public, before we took it to a vote, and I know it would need delaying that. If, in the town meeting forum, if, if people felt that was any different and, and then see if. You know, people came out to a town meeting different than they would come out to this Arpa public hearing, is there, is there any merit to that at all? Um, and get some feedback from there.
Well, then I think you'd say, here, here it is, here's what we're concerned, but you can't vote on it. Which is what a public hearing is, right, it has its part, but um, putting it in context of other things that. People can purchasing or asking people to vote on at that meeting, that would, that would be, I think that people will support this. Um. I do, but.
I. I feel confident that our taxpayers believe in the work that our staff did and, and, and we'll see that. Um, anytime you go into it to guess or no question, you have to expect a yes or no answer, so it could fail. Um, either way, but that's not what I'm afraid of, I'm just not in agree, in, in agreement of changing the process happily along. But I've said before, I am one vote on the larger commission, and if this commission vote is taking a different direction, I absolutely honor. That's the beauty of us getting to decide that, not just me saying no. Um, but I know if I withdraw this request, there is no other funding for this and this would be very, very difficult to get through our budget. When, you know, we're asking for so many other things, some of the comments made in the public meeting were, maybe you need to look at all the salaries and let's pay them more if you think they need this. But then there, done that, nobody's arguing that, yet when we have to make cuts, the people are, are where the cuts go. And this is some of exactly what this money was here for, that's why there's a completely separate category. It's premium pay, if we added that, we'd be talking a whole lot more money. Um, so it's.
So I, I agree with you guys, I don't think it should go to town. I, I'm at the point, and maybe we can ask, if you think, ask Alex, I think he's on now. What his thoughts are on the part of our membership, we, we know. Should we figure out what we're gonna do with this before we get this started?
Yeah.
I don't wanna, yeah, based on who's not here.
Yeah.
I think, if, if we don't wanna, if, if you're not comfortable going to a town meeting. And my opinion is you shouldn't, and, and I don't know what others feel, but you seem to feel if it doesn't get to a town meeting, then it shouldn't. And to me, that's just a disservice to staff, well, it got a little bit too complicated, so we just decided to scuttle it. So thanks for the work you did, oh, and by the way, you have to assist in administering one point two million dollars worth of projects for the town over the next couple of years.
Which staff can't speak for themselves, if I was staff, I would want it to die. I, I'd want it to go away, don't pay me the money. Just move on, that if I, if I was a town employee, I would want stop, this has gotten ridiculous, that. Person. You can, your time, you obviously can disagree, but I would be uncomfortable.
Well, it doesn't affect me. I come in and out. I'm not an employee, so I'm not on this list, but I just.
Not for the staff that sits at this table, but some staff that I've had a conversation with, they um, have expressed. Slightly offended by the whole topic and not by the, should it be decided here or there and because of the recusal. Is the questioning of whether or not they're trying to pay themselves. Um, and some of the comments during the public hearing questioning whether or not they actually did work and were deserving of it. So those are different conversations. And 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 again, if this goes to town meeting, that is some of what will come up and there's no way to get around that. Um, that's not the merit of the question. Trust me, when I, what I I said it before and I will show the records of every employee, we, they worked here. We worked at home for very, very little of the time. Um, we don't have the benefit of that. Half of Rob's job could not be done, um, because she was sitting at home. So she has to be here and and in the vault. It's very difficult. And even, you know, our current parks director was not here then, our previous director was. Um, and she didn't have a lot going on in her department, but made sure that the parks that we do have are taken care of. Made sure that any other department that needed something, um, that something was done. So they all should deal with each other. That's. That's what comes into play and we start having this, these discussions and the more it it's going to get, when we get into town meeting, make no mistake. It will start into a discussion of no longer is it. A yes or a no, but is it deserved?
Only question yours, are you in favor of the economy? It is like clearly.
Yeah, I. I'm not opposed to the town meeting. I'm not in favor of changing the process. So a little bit of a mixed answer there. If this commission voted to go to town meeting, I would, but I would support it. I just don't think we should change the process. I don't think we should change it for any of these things. Um, and and I hear where everybody comes from. I think I will take the biggest hit. On this particular project and I'm fully, I welcome that because I stand behind the the process. Let's say it didn't involve all these people and only six people were sitting at the table besides anyone questioned that we made and sit based on. Only six votes and seventy eleven votes. Probably not. We know they're not at the table because they're personally benefiting from it, which is why they get up and remove themselves. Mike asked not to be included, which is why he's still sitting at the table. Um, and I honored that. And so. It's it's what, again, what this commission feels.
I was standing near your. Uh, summary of the town meeting. It seemed like this all started when you said, okay, let's let it down. Given the board of finance, given the opinion, it's not amazing to hear what their opinion might be. I've still not there with you saying.
Uh.
Your summary.
Uh, he, you're talking about what the town attorney said?
Well.
Oh, at the board of finance.
And their opinion of what we could do there.
They settled on that they, they think it should go to town meeting and not be, and they didn't give their. A collective opinion on whether or not.
If that was their opinion, you go to a town.
Yeah, we asked for their opinion on the project. They gave us their opinion on the process and they didn't want to take an opinion on the project.
Right.
So they skirted around what we asked.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We're still not.
Did the board of finance vote on that recommendation or what?
It was all in favor and Christina's thing.
So we were in front of a Zoom call with this. Community was invited on that vote. And I don't call for any dissension from the community like that. It weren't many people.
A lot of questions about the process, not the project. And it was, it was that the process should not be decided at the table. And I still have to be sure, but I believe that was kind of the.
I I wasn't at that meeting, but.
Yeah. There was a lot of questions about should they be deciding on something they were going to benefit from. And they recused themselves from. This current motion and the the first time it came up.
So if if we vote on something we're going to do that. It's done. The board of finance come back.
No, no, if if we vote on it, it's done.
If we vote in favor.
We vote in favor, that's that's the end of the story. Um. There may be fallout from that, probably. But not fallout legally and not fallout from the board of finance.
And the political fallout will be the process.
Yeah.
Which is to be an ordinance, which went to town.
Right, which is what I stand up and say, we set an ordinance. Um, that that does give authority to the commission, so we do legally have the authority. And then I will give the board of finance credit. They, most of them didn't say they didn't think, it wasn't the legal opinion that gave them pause. It was. Um, the optics of it. So they were at least more um. Cognizant of the fact that we we did have the authority and they just thought we should look at it differently.
So the only, the other thing that I keep thinking about is if they. And I I'm still, I'm fundamentally opposed to it going to a town meeting. If it did. We're all saying, we agree that this is a good idea and the employees, but the optics. So it goes to a project that we all agree on, goes to town meeting, twelve people show up and it gets denied. Now, so now twelve, twelve people show up, the 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 conversation goes down the rabbit hole, the project is denied. And this commission has taken a project which we support, not unlike the one that was just sitting here. And we basically sent it off to someone else to decide and now the project is dead. Well, same, and and that's just to me.
But the person you're sending it after the side are the people who actually, it's their money.
But they, they're the same people that allowed the ordinance, right?
And gave us authority. Gave us the authority, right?
So it was very clear at that meeting, right? Because there was some, there were both sides of that perspective were represented. At the adoption of this ordinance that that town meeting. Um, I think that this has been going on for a long enough period of time that if this was going to be this massive ground swell of people thinking it was terrible, we'd have heard about it like that.
I hope so.
And what are the, and again, is it, is it project or process? Is it people that are against uh?
People don't get.
So.
People don't get beyond the process part to even think about the merits of it.
I have to deal with the board of finance. You have to deal with the board of finance. You have to do, I I'm not.
Yeah, no, you're right.
So the actions that we take, even though you have the authority and you have power, you still have to go back. And ask for money next year.
And I think that any one.
So. We we can say we have authority and and I'm not trying to argue against this. I I'm just, it's a rock and a hard place that I, for me, you know, they're like. So it's 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 not, is it worth it? Is it worth it at this point? That that's all. Is it worth? And 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 we all have to decide that.
So I think the project is worth it, whichever direction it goes and still feel the project. Um, is worth it. I think it's again, the final rule, whether we decided or we vote to go to town meeting. I stand with, I'd rather see the project go to town meeting before I withdraw because. That final rule has um. Just a handful of very specific categories. We're utilizing um, one to to use this, one separate one, it is premium pay. So there is actual language to actually honor the work done um, within certain sectors. And and municipalities were one of them. And so, you know, the ARPA money is just for that. I would. Again, I don't want to see us change the process for one day, but if it meant we could actually do what I believe is right. I'd rather see it go that way than just the drop. You won't see me just the drop, just the drop of this project.
I promise we just don't know.
That is correct. I always say, when you ask a yes or no question, you have to be ready for a yes or no. So that that is the beauty of our town meeting, right? We, you know, we kind of. You hope that you, you arm them with the, the facts. Um, and that they hear those facts and determine exactly what you think and they may or they may not. It depends on who's in the room at that time.
I I've, to your point about the board of finance, I've had to hire the assistant position in the land use office twice since I've been here. We're consistently ten to thirty thousand dollars cheaper, right? We pay ten to thirty thousand dollars less per year on our other salary. Than that same position. Ten miles from you. You can go to Mansfield and other places. So the board of finance, really, in my opinion, if I go to them next year and they say, well, we're not sure about X, Y, and Z. Because one of your employees got a few hundred dollars in a bonus during ARPA, I'd happily hand that money back to them, however they want, with interest. If they were going to add that to their salary of recurring. But this is a, I'm I'm pulling up the application or the the document that was submitted. As part of um. Part of what they, um, the board of selection originally um, and then. Talking hundreds of dollars after taxes.
Yeah.
And again, the, you know, like it's just.
And what I didn't hear the board of finance say was the merit of the, right? They didn't, a couple of them um, have. Said they weren't in disagreement, which you know, they're just not saying that they are. I I don't doubt that they would, they support this and we see that. Um, they think they see where we stand. There are no much tearing implications. Um, but there could be, there could be fallout from staff too. But again, if our choice is here, our move this motion forward. And deal with unnecessary fallout or move to town meeting and have it go that way. I'm good either way because it's a limited project and. To happen. And if they want to not support some budgets we put forward, um, because I believed and um, rewarding the work. That our staff did during COVID, I'll, you know, have a. And that conference.
You're the chairman of the committee, right? Would you speak without interruption? How do you feel about all of them? You give a little opinion there and you get interrupted and.
My, my, I think that that it has merit. I want to vote for it, but I don't want to vote for it. In this forum, because I, first of all, my my board that sent me here that I'm representing was formally said. Recommend go town meeting, which is what I do believe. Um, this town then was. So the motion that's on the table to approve it, I would vote no to. If it was a motion to go to town meeting, I'd vote yes. And when we're at town meeting, I would vote yes. But I can't vote yes. In the seat I'm in right now. And that, that's just.
And I respect that. That is within your stance, as long as we talked about that, I respect that. Because we are all speaking, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of the board of, so I could was not advise that different direction, right? And and she is and she's honoring that. So at this point, um, I moved that we call the question. I moved it and called the question.
That we wrote on.
That means we get a discussion and.
I just want to be clear, if the motion fails, so deny all the project outright or no? Unmade a motion to approve and it does not pass.
I I guess so in terms of, you could make it friendly and I'm going to change your motion for you for the trial, or you can withdraw.
What would the alternative motion be? Um, if if there's a motion to go to town meeting, I'm in the. Um, because I, I just don't know what's going to be said there and I, I I don't want to be walking into a town hall after that and. Have certain employees' names be brought up, like God knows. And I I just, to me, that is a greater concern with actual.
I agree with you, Mike. However, she's a, on behalf of the board of selection. Submitter of the project and I'm, I'm going with her. I know you want to vote on it, but I, 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 so I'm I'm basically the same as I, as Christina at this point. Either nothing or, or was it time? But if I have to vote now. When we decide, when we went to the board of finance for their opinion, for me, that was where I. The the right to vote here, in my mind, when? Because we're asking for help. And that's just me.
No, but I think Mike, so Mike's question, if we were to vote, I I moved to call the question, which means we should immediately stop talking to vote on that. And so. Um, and and so if that's the case, that means dead. No, I think another motion could be made, right? Because another motion could mean.
Right.
We make less money, we do something else. So it means that motion wasn't dead. It doesn't, we didn't move to. Get rid of the project. So I think this motion can still be voted on. And if if it doesn't, if it's a no, I think other motions could come that would take a different sort of action.
So it's wrong.
Is that correct? That would be a different motion, which could be a momentative difference. So. But unfortunately, I still made a motion.
We have to vote. We're kind of all.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So.
So what, first is the barrier, which is.
To move the question.
Move the question. So is everybody ready to move?
Your second and end. I don't think.
All in favor of the. Moving the question. You're you're good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So that passes. So we're going to move for, we're moving the question. So.
The question, the original Mike's original motion was to approve.
Thirty two.
Upper thirty two.
So we're talking just.
Right.
Yes, okay. So I'm a question of whether or not to approve upper thirty two.
So I I mean, yes.
I say yes. Sue.
I will abstain.
I me, I I already explained one of them now. Um. So. Uh, Eric.
No.
Tom?
No.
Okay, so the mo- so the motion fails. But.
When I move the ARPA thirty. Two, right, thirty two. Uh, I I move that we recommend the board of selection call a town meeting to approve ARPA thirty two.
Oh, second.
Want me to make more discussion about, about it?
Yeah, I just, I have two minutes. One, uh, I think I've said it before, I'll say again, so on the record of, we're changing the process. I do not agree with that. But I can hear what folks are saying. Um, and I would encourage, I don't know how to do stands. Um, if we didn't have this process, because we didn't get to vote on something that wasn't a process confused. Um, and then if you support the merits of the project, then you speak to that at um, at said time meeting. Because that's what's important is the merits of this project at that town meeting. Um, and know that our employees, it's not about their service, um, whether or not we believe they, this project stand.
And and that. I I, as we are the chairman, I totally plan to be there um. And explain why this question, we've come from before then and explain the whole issue. And then also say that I would have liked to have voted yes and uh, was not comfortable to do it the way it was. Uh, and explain why I think it's definitely the best. Has merits and has to support it.
Um, just a question. I uh, how would, there's a number of town employees that are town residents, right? So they.
They can get a vote in town meeting. They get a vote in town meeting.
So it's, so all the, so all the residents that are, the the optics, okay, well.
Yes, so so a couple of folks that recuse themselves at the table right now are actually going to get a vote and cannot be denied their vote in town. They're not to die their vote here. They chose. Uh, but they absolutely once again have the opportunity to vote at town meeting.
Yeah. And then.
And there are members of this commission that will not get any vote at town. It was there or not.
So the motion is to move up to thirty two and recommend that the board of selection call a town meeting.
Yeah, and it was seconded.
Second by Tom.
So are we ready to? All in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? You're abstaining.
So we're going to do this roll call. So Christina was a yes.
Yeah.
I'm a no. Stu is a. Stu is a. Tom. Yeah, it's a yes. He's a.
Sir, we were a yes.
Were you?
You were a yes.
So three yes. Uh, two no. You were a no? You were a yes?
So it's four. Or. Four, nine, one. But you need four for it to pass. Three, but the three are what it passed.
The four, one and one.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, yes. Yep. Four, yes, one, I'm still.
No, they've walked by a couple of times. Alan, could you tell, I don't know where they are, but they're, they're lurking around. So then, um, I guess I'll write a, a, an official letter to get it on the agenda for this one. So ARPA thirty-six. Um. For which Alex, we see you on the, on the call and we're waiting for everybody to come in.
So, so I'm going to make a motion. Oh, when I, when I, when I come back.
Give it a round of applause when you guys.
I'm going to make the motion to approve ARPA thirty-six retention bonuses for fire department employee.
What'd you say?
I, I moved to approve ARPA thirty-six.
I'll say.
All right.
We can have a discussion. So some of what I heard at the board of finance was that. Nobody on this board was going to make their own vote. I'm very disappointed in that discussion. They assumed that the. Town office building staff members were going to vote for a fire department member and a fire department member was going to vote for them. Because they all thought they were going to get something out of it. I thought that was incredibly, um, irresponsible of them to say and. Assume that these people who've been put in very important positions in the town lack integrity. And it couldn't be farther from the truth. We, um, have taken a different direction of ARPA thirty-two. And, um, I, I still firmly believe that in the town of Wellington. There is no one more on the front lines than, um, the, in all of our fire department members, we don't have the ability to give these funds to volunteer. I know the departments are working together to try to come up with some other way. Um, similar to what the town did with its elected official, uh, myself, uh, not included. And I, I think they put themselves in harm's way. It's what they do every day and it's an insult to them to not move forward with this particular item by this commission.
Alex? Do you, do you want to?
He could be able to unmute himself. He said, nobody's.
I, I, I guess while he's unmuting up, just for my purposes, I don't see why we should approve one instead of retention bonuses and not about. We have, so my perspective is if we have people that are speaking about the process and not the project, right? So they're getting to step one and not two. I don't think we should expect that they're going to distinguish between the two. When they're not really going so far as to read what we're actually requesting. And so if we're concerned about optics and we've had all these concerns about the last request. Um, I'm not in favor of this commission approving this. I just think it, it. Man, my blood pressure's so high right now.
I hear you, but what, what came to us before was that Chief Moore would. Was thinking about withdrawing his motion altogether rather than taking it to town meeting. Um, that's, it's disappointing to me not, not because I, I know he believes that, that, that they, um, are deserving of this. And, and worked really hard. I mean, they did things the rest of us, let's just face it, aren't willing to do. It's not the work we do. Um, and so I would rather have an up-down vote and then vote to go the same direction as the other one. But I wanted on the record that I believe we should take action on, so.
And I want to add to the record during the time of COVID, when it started. I worked in the capacity as office manager for the town and under the selectmen. And when COVID was uncertain and it was very scary. At least five, probably seven members of the fire department contracted COVID because they were on the ambulance on serving. Um. And. It was scary. It was scary because nobody knew what COVID was and I know a couple of them didn't. Didn't have any symptoms and a couple of them were very sick. Um, so I just want that on the record because, um. When I go.
When, when, even for the week or so that town employees were able to stay home, our first responders didn't get that option. They did not have that option. They did not ask to exercise that option. So, uh, again, we can choose to take them, um, to approve it, to deny it. Um, Chief Moore can withdraw for, from consideration, or we can do something similar, move this to, to town meeting. But I still believe, um, it's something that we should approve. If we don't take that action here, we decide to, um, give our authority to someone else, at least it's on the record.
Well, I think we've already done that. We've already given, we've already voted to give our authority to someone.
On a different, on a different. On a different item.
Well.
Yeah. It was a different project that motion was just for one item. This is a separate item and a separate motion can be made.
I would say I would agree passionately with all the emotions of who is deserving of the money. And our frontline people going in the houses disregarding their own health. You know, that's all, that's fantastic. I have nothing but praise for that. But again, going back to Christine's point with the process, that's what this is all about.
So, so I have to say. I think the difference with this one might be that. I could be wrong, but everybody except for Stuart, it's, it's in both of us. I don't know. I don't know if we got the town employees.
Let's each individual.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we put it be so true?
Yeah, yes. What, in other words, what I, what I think I'm saying is you are, because there's a lot of time for it on board. The reason, uh, I just acted the way we did, at least I did. Went to the board of finding it and they gave their answer. Oh, and in, in this case, you don't have that, just a couple of people vote for a smaller board, I think. I don't know.
I'd be hard pressed to think the town would support it. I would really support the town and support this whole article. Understanding the work that you do. And their appreciation for it.
So the motion on the table is. To approve it. And I, I just told you, well, what we voted for for ARPA thirty-two was to bring it to the selectmen to call a town meeting. So, um, that's kind of what we're just talking about here. So. The question is, do we vote on it? We have one on this one or do we treat this one the same, so we just treat it the other way, which to Mike's point. Mike feels like that was outside of the process, the normal process. But the reason why is that we've had a lot of people who were in this like that from ARPA thirty-two. ARPA thirty-six, we only have one person, like that. So it's a little bit of a different.
To us, to us, to us, because the board of, I, I want it to be clear, the board of finance made it clear and members of the board of finance have been clear. That one would vote the other and, and the larger group would vote for one and the one would vote for the larger group. And not assume that they had any individual, uh, mind or integrity. Um, and that, that really, I have a real issue with that, the, um, the, the kind of. They determine how everyone else, uh, would see things and not give them a voice, make their voice the way for the most exciting opportunity. It was, so, you know, if this commission feels like I hear what you're saying. I want to go the other way and put them all out there at the same point. Again, I will honor the democratic process here, which is we get to decide what that is.
I, I think that these folks are still employees of the town. I mean, they, they still provide service to the town in, in some way, just like employees that work in this building. My question would be. If, so ARPA thirty-two goes to town meeting. And let's say it's approved. Does that mean that in this office or in the building now, you can just, in, in theory, those checks can be cut? Or is the expectation that this commission then makes the decision to disperse those funds? Are we using this town meeting as a reference or are we using this town meeting and we actually delegating our authority? Cause I don't think we can, I think we can have a town meeting which says approve to not. I don't actually think that gives any authority to send that money out the door. So I, I guess that's just the point of clarification. I think legally. Still has to come back here for this commission to make a decision. That will be what my gut tells me, but you know. Because again, we.
I think it's advisory.
Can I switch it? What you, what you heard out of what Brian said? I mean, I thought, I thought it made clear we could delegate our authorities.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I heard was the town meeting gave authority to this, this commission to make the decision. So it's this. Commission asks the town meeting. They're going to give, give the authority in first, so it, it's the ultimate authority.
We could have given our, as a group, we could delegate. We have the, the ability to dispense them, right? So we could do that using a different method and a vote by. The board of finance. We could have put it in there. We could have said we want something to go to a referendum. It would be unusual, but we had the ability to do that. Like again, you know. I always agree with changing the process and said that in our last vote, so.
Just to tell you where I stand, I, like I said, I, I'm a no on this only because I think it should go to a town meeting if the other one is.
Can I ask Chief Moore to weigh in? Because some of why I made my motion was, uh, because what had come to us before was that, um. Chief Moore thought if it was going to go to town meeting, I think he would withdraw this request. And so I'd be curious to, to hear his input on that.
Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Sorry. Um, sorry I was late joining. Um, when I originally had talked to Tom, my thought was. The one thing I don't want is the town's people scrutinizing our, our staff or our staff to feel, um, unappreciated. Because during COVID, uh, they, they really did work their tails off and they pulled a lot of extra hours and most of them got sick. Spending months away from their families, et cetera. Working, you know, helping the residents in town. Um, i- if it means moving this forward to a town meeting, that we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Um, anything that we can back to our staff, our hope was not to go that route. Like I said, my biggest fear is my staff feeling scrutinized and unappreciated.
That's the risk this commission is doing. Can I, would you mind if I ask Christina? I, I'm just curious if you guys, Tom, please, will you vote on this one?
I don't feel comfortable at all.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay, no, it's, it's important to know.
So with that, that being so what Mike said, I am willing to withdraw my motion. Knowing how we feel and knowing, um, what Chief Moore, that the, I think, again, the lower motion is based on, you know. Not having another option. And we didn't want to see that. So Mike's willing to withdraw the second.
I will.
So there are no options?
I'm over ARPA thirty-six, um, goes to town meeting or the select and call a town meeting in the same way.
And any discussion? And I just want to reiterate that I plan to go to this town meeting. I plan to explain. Uh, on behalf of the ARPA commission, why then I'll do this like moving. It's my why we're bringing it to the selection to call the town meeting on it. And also, um. What I said before is as an individual, I, I want, uh, well, yes, I'll talk about how this is, um. I think a great use of the spot, legitimate use of the fun and, um. But encourage everyone else to be the same, um, who wants to, and, um. But as. Sitting in, and see that I'm sitting in and being the word finance delegate, I have to vote no if we can vote right now. So. Um, anyway, that's.
Did you say?
You said.
I did?
Yeah.
Huh. Yeah, I did.
All right. Any, any other points anyone?
All right, let's vote. Um. Yeah, so I'll go this way. Stuart.
I'll vote, I support the motion to have it done.
Okay, Tom.
Yes.
Erica.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Me, yes. Troy. Stuart.
I'm staying.
Uh, Dennis. Jenny, I don't feel comfortable with it. So you can either refuse or abstain.
No.
So it passes. So let the other one, I'll, over one, one, two, three, four, and select my guy to put on the agenda. And we'll go through the process.
And I heard what you said, Christina, and I'll say the same thing about, I said, regarding the last. Um, item, I encourage this board, we didn't take this up as an individual matter because we got bogged down in process. And not the merits of the project. So I certainly encourage you all to speak out. There are members of this commission that are not, um, residents and do not get a vote in this process. So it makes it a little bit easier for you not having to vote, but you still have a voice. Um, as a member of the ARPA commission and for, you know, where you stand. Um, and I ask that we once again discuss the process and not, um. A referendum on both town employees and fire department employees. And, and know that the only reason that our volunteer firefighters are not included with this is because it's absolutely is not allowed. Um, from the. Final rule, and we're trying to honor that so that we make sure we do adequately, even appropriately appropriate these dollars. But that both chiefs are working together to see that something comes from them because not only were paid staff. Um, present, there were volunteers that were present and exposed, um, and quarantined and sick and we all recognize that too. So I just don't want it to be a topic on volunteers versus paid fire department staff as well. But that's the risk we take.
Okay. Any other funding requests, submissions, actions that we could take? We really don't have any other actions we can take other than to, um, open, open it back up for more significance, which, um. We held up on that last time because we didn't have all the money yet and we still don't have all the money. We are, we're, we're sure it's coming, right? So, so, and so at this.
Right. And we don't have any reason to believe it's not. But it sounds like everything's in the works. If it was gone through a different channel, then I think they have thirty days from that date that they got it to come to us. So, but I, I agree with you. I think we're better off holding up until we know we have the funds.
Yeah.
And we know that everyone who's been approved, it's clear that when, that they shouldn't be spending anything or committing to anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I give enough in that fight? Can I give enough there?
Long as you're spending money. There's no money.
Alan, you want to tell them about our conversation with Carl?
Yeah, Carl said that who is going to begin the survey process. And how is he going to be him, uh, having another company permitted to do it? Or, yeah. The company can't do it per price that he wrote down and he gave for us, he's going to do it himself. And he would do it at that cost. So setting, you know, that process.
Does he need a P O in order to do that, start it?
No, he just said, like, as soon as the job is done, he'll, he'll cover the cost and then he'll. No, he just said, like, if the job is done, he'll he'll cover the cost and then he'll.
He's not, but there's there's some risk, and if he does the work and let's say, let's say something crazy happens and money doesn't come.
Yeah.
We still have to pay him.
That's why we brought it up.
Are you, do you have it in your budget to pay him?
Sure.
I mean, I wouldn't say that because I've seen your budget, so, I mean. That's why I think Christina, you said something.
Yeah.
Saying so, because a P O needs to be cut. And until Kelsey hears, otherwise she won't be cutting it.
Right.
Well, I understand that he will present the cost of the survey. That's my understanding. Have he been presented the cost of the survey, or did he not say that? He's just gonna go ahead and do it.
He gave us the estimated cost.
So if you understand, he's just gonna go ahead and do the survey. And go for it, okay, so. In that light, we're on. Unless we stop it. Pretty much give them a green light for the survey.
Well, okay, so. And do you know how much that one part is? Because there is somebody.
Only five hundred?
How much?
Between five and seven.
Okay, so so for that, I think there could be a P O prep because we have. With the cash flow, we're we're good. But with the whole two hundred, we can't, can't do it.
The survey and it was put allowing to begin with the. The parameters of the job.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think we're okay because we have not appropriated it all. We still have a hundred and seventy-nine thousand that has not been appropriated. Then we have thirty thousand that's already been returned, and we know there's more coming. Um, so. And if every, if everything that we talked about today gets approved, um, that's only eighty-three thousand, so there's a hundred and twenty-six thousand left over. Um, but beyond that, just in terms of cash flow, we um. We have probably thirty thousand dollars that um. If everybody bought all the stuff that we said to buy the stuff, we still have thirty thousand dollars.
So we'll continue with the survey.
Yes. Oh, oh, I guess we need to get a P R.
Right, then you need to go through.
From Kelsey.
We'll talk, we need to make sure you go through the proper steps before.
Yeah.
Well, the profit isn't the proper stuff.
You can't just hire. Well, has it been approved by anyone to the court, but the commission, your commission. Should be going through a process to do all those things, and then a P O is cut.
We're all used to getting made by the town, so I think it's not.
What's the cost of the survey?
Five thousand.
Just the town procurement. It's, I mean, I have, so what does it have to do with? Do you have to go out to bed and something solicit to be proposed? Unless it was on two thousand. Well, you have to go, I mean, I have, I have uh an R P that I wrote for a project that we told, and I could give you swap out what you need to do, but. It's one five thousand, it seems like it would be a little less.
Yeah. Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. It's four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. It's a very simple procedure. But it's five thousand, it's a little more.
And faster, I mean, for you not wanting to lose time, given where we are in year, having to put this down. You know, rock a bit, it's gonna just take longer. We'll talk.
Okay.
Christina, I just mentioned, and thank you. You may not be ready to open it back up, but I know Wellington One has a. Jaws of Life system that's not working at its capacity and. Alex, Chief Moore's planning on trying to. Put in a request for that, replace that system. So. Right, Alex, chief, sir?
Yes, I.
Is that five thousand dollar range? How are we not?
No.
Mid to high forties.
Okay, and then I know the library has some other things that they want to put in. And I know that they're making a request from the teachers.
Not for them, it's, man, she'll just ask, and if you'd like to go on this before this, like, let's talk about that. Basically, I was gonna tell.
Yeah.
Jump on that.
Would we need to do another sort of? Splash about it, or?
Yeah, I think so.
But we want to wait until we get the funds before we do that. Right now, no one else can.
It's close, it's off, but it's not. But I just think that it's kind of a. I don't know, it's a bit of a letdown when you, these people get these projects submitted and then they have to sit solved because we don't know when the money's gonna. And so it might make more sense to wait until we know what the status of that is. So if something urgent.
Yeah. Okay, and then the only other thing to talk about is our next meeting, which if we meet on the first and the um third Monday. The weekend, September fifth will be the next one, which is just next week. And then September nineteenth.
This is Labor Day.
Right.
So can I? As we talked to, we might be able to go to once a month. Um, and again, this commission has the authority, like every board of commission, to determine where they meet. There was a discussion um at the Board of Selectmen where a selectman proposed an ordinance to um have an ordinance that all town meetings shall be held. No later, no earlier than five thirty P M, Monday through Friday. Um, the board did not approve that and and take that any further. Um, what did come out of that is this commission is what this is all about. Because our commission is meeting during the day. Um, and so, you know, I said I believed it was very political discussion, which it is. That this meeting is a public meeting, it is available to the public. Um, just like every other meeting, any board of commission gets to determine when they, when they meet, we set a a regular calendar. Um, but if this board, I think it came up a little bit on our last meeting, wanted to discuss that this particular commission's meetings. Were singled out and why someone was proposing such an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and I once again stand by. Our meeting is a meeting in public, not a public meeting. We do everything very transparent. All of this is recorded and then put on. Uh, for anyone to see, our minutes are available for anyone to see. If even had any executive decision discussion that um should not be held or would be considered illegal, we've been, we've been very transparent in our dealings. But um it might be appropriate for this commission to to start to think about whether or not we continue still to meet at one thirty. I don't see it as an issue, but it clearly was the catalyst um for what I thought was a pretty. Limiting. For it, that would take away the ability to to do lots of things by different boards and commissions, so I'm sharing that with you.
I'd just like to add that. If that did come into play, um, the housing authority. For example, who has made their their regular meeting schedule, they meet at four P M. So that would obviously, you know, do. That's one that comes to mind, so.
It was, we found, we have yet to find evidence of a town in Connecticut, and we all know that every town has their own. Former town government, and in a hundred and sixty-nine, we haven't found one yet. I'm still there isn't, and I heard from a hundred and sixty-nine that has limiting um ability to hold town meetings on any given day or time. But in that discussion at the Board of Selectmen, this commission um uh fluffing boards, uh fluffing one board specifically asked. What was the driver? And the response was, they are a commission. So I just. You know, I've not heard that widespread, I um, but but there's. No reason for us not to talk about it, just like each each board to get to decide. What time they're meeting, what day of the week they're meeting, whether they're meeting fully in person, fully remote, or hybrid. We have those abilities. That was, an ordinance like that would limit every boarding commission.
So I just would know, for for me, I mean, obviously, I'm not here every day, um, but also depending on when the commission, if we decided to move the time back. Would conflict with one of the boards that our office supports. So I wouldn't be able to attend, like, if we moved back tonight, because we would generally have another meeting for another mission. And I'm trying to schedule special meetings, I've looked at the calendar and there's always a meeting going on, so. Finding a day that doesn't conflict with another mission, and then you run into the risk of, well, you're holding this meeting when there's this meeting, and now I have to choose, and so. I personally am.
And I was thinking, oh, we could do this one to five thirty, but you have selectmen meeting at six thirty, thirty, so.
And then we have budget meetings at five thirty.
Yeah, I listen, I I definitely, I don't agree with the ordinance, but I spoke a piece on that, but I thought it was, uh, you know. The responsible thing for me to discuss at this meeting where we heard this commission's work again. We allow president to speak, that's something that is required to be part of a public meeting, we find it important, we we allow, but the work of the commission is what needs to be done, and when the commission. Can all meet, so um I'm not opposed to that. I I know when I first suggested it. It was because there were many members that were staff, and this was when they were all here and available, and they were appointed to this commission. And part of the ordinance because of the widespread work they do on behalf of the town and and their role there, so. Our commissioners haven't had an issue with this timeframe, but. Some folks in the community have. It's not, I haven't received one um phone call, one email complaint about this, it's come up um. During a selectman's meeting, um, so.
I'd like to add to, it's such thing, we're like. Have, and what would happen in that C and then uh the selectman called an emergency meeting for something that's just that an emergency.
We would be able to, the way it was um proposed, we wouldn't have any. But um for purposes of this, I just wanted, at this point, if we're fine with still one thirty, um. It's good if somebody decided seven thirty worked or two thirty or nine A M. I mean, cities and towns across the state meet at random time.
So also going back to the, the day, if we have our meeting at one thirty on the nineteenth and we cancel the Labor Day one. Um, I think by then, we would have. Had some movement, we'll either have some money or have a decision on the town meeting, or we'll have. Some other, some other things will have been sent out, that's enough, a few, so at least for some stuff to start happening. Probably not the.
Probably not the town meeting. Because I know there's at least one item that went to board of finance that wasn't ready to. And I, one other, so we have at least two more, I'd like to call them together.
But this, was everyone one step at the nineteen? That's all we'll do there, and I'll send, I'll send a letter to cancel the one. Yeah.
And you are, Eric, telling me what happens to the two. Article requests when it goes with Tommy, what's what happens now?
Go to town.
Today, you have to announce it for thirty days. What's the time?
Well, so the selectmen will need to call the town meeting, so in one of their meetings, which they need every two weeks. So maybe next week, they they could talk about it, but. They want to put a couple of things on the town meeting agenda, so they might not do it the right way. But so it'll be a few weeks, probably.
If if it passes or fails the town meeting, I've been communicating about to the chair, who will chair this commission. But I would hope that most of you would be in attendance.
Yeah.
Once the town meeting is called, it's typically two weeks. From the day we call it, that the meeting is actually held, and that's to give us some time to prepare, the notice, get the notice in the newspaper. For the um proper amount of time.
Okay, um, so now we're uh present to speak. Same. Anyone present speak about anything? Well, then, um, we can enter some motion.
Sir.
All in favor? Thanks, everybody.